Good evening, I'm Carolyn Rye, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this 22nd day of June 2021. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's Executive Orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7th, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members have determined it's impractical and unsafe to allow full-capacity seating in school board chambers. For this June 22nd meeting, limited public seating has been made available on a first-come, first-served basis, beginning shortly before the earlier workshop session. Members of the public, as always, will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please take the verbal role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in school board chambers is Chairwoman Rye, Mrs. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Owens, and Ms. Riggs.
Okay, and for our absent members, Mrs. Weems is out of state doing opioid presentations. Mrs. Melnick is out of state with her family, and Mrs. Manning is away on a mission trip. So with that, would everybody present, please join me in a moment of silence. And now please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, this brings us to the Student, Employee, and Public Awards Recognition portion of our ceremony. Ms. Anderson?
Tonight, we as a board have the pleasure of recognizing Division students, teams, and staff who have been awarded or recognized during state, multi-state, or national competitions or events. With that in mind, we are pleased to announce the School Board recognition recipients for June 22nd, 2021. Mrs. Riggs?
We begin our recognitions with the students who have been selected from amongst their peers throughout the state for inclusion in the 2020-2021 Virginia Music Educators All-Virginia Honors Music Ensembles. This includes recognitions in Concert Band, Symphonic Band, Symphony Orchestra, and Secondary and Elementary Course. These are the highest possible individual state awards and recognitions in music. These students have been adjudicated by a panel of judges that included the Virginia Band and Orchestra Division Association, the Virginia Choral Directors Association, and secondary and collegiate music professionals throughout the state. It is now my pleasure to recognize these students over the course of the next several First up, we recognize the outstanding students who were a part of Concert Band. Congratulations to these students. Their names are up on the board. Up next, we recognize these talented students as part of Symphonic Band. Congratulations on this wonderful accomplishment. Next, we honor these amazing students as part of Symphony Orchestra. Congratulations to these students on the job well done. This slide and the next two showcase the names of the outstanding students who are part of the amazing All-Virginia Course. Shown here is the second slide highlighting our talented All-Virginia Core students. And this is the last slide of all of our Virginia Core students. Congratulations to each of the All-Core students on their tremendous accomplishments. Rounding out, the recognitions for the All-Virginia Honors Music Ensembles are our All-Elementary Course honorees. Amazing job, everyone, and congratulations to all of our outstanding students on this remarkable achievement. Thank you.
Next, we are excited to recognize Alexander Skoronsky from the Advanced Technology Center, who is a Naval Architecture and Ocean Engineering student. Alex placed first in the first in the state for the Virtual Technology Students Association Competition for Computer-Aid Design Engineer. In this competition, participants use complex computer graphics skills, tools, and processes to develop three-dimensional representations of engineering subjects such as a machine part, tool, device, or manufactured product. Alex represented Virginia at the Virtual National Technology Student Association Competition early this month. Congratulations, Alex. We know your future has great things ahead.
Up next, we have Colin Fogarty from Cox High School. Colin won the 2020-2021 VHSL Class V Debate Championship for Lincoln Douglas Debate. Colin has been heavily involved with debate throughout his entire high school career. Aside from this year's championship win, he was part of the state championships teams at First Colonial High School for both 2017-2018 and 2018-2019. Colin also attended the University of Kentucky Tournament of Champions in 2019. Additionally, Colin is the 2020-21 Model North Atlantic Treaty Organization, also known as NATO Scholarship Challenge recipient. He is planning on attending the University of Virginia to study foreign affairs. Congratulations, Colin. We are excited to see the amazing things you accomplish in your future.
Next, we have an outstanding accomplishment from Jude Dutton. On March 17th, Jude received a gold medal for his digital artwork titled "Luminosity" in the National Scholastic Art and Writings Awards. His work is now displayed virtually, and it will be on display in various venues around the country for the next year. Jude is a dual-strand student in Salem High School's Visual and Performing Arts Academy, majoring in art and minoring in instrumental music, where he has earned honors in both strands. He is currently a bassist at the Bay Youth Symphony Orchestra, as well as an intern at Ocean View Arts, where he is focusing on realistic renderings for his artistic direction. Jude excels in painting, illustration, and 3D modeling, which he hopes to continue in college. Amazing work, Jude. We know you will accomplish outstanding things in your future. Our next recognition highlights Sarah Gibson. On March 17th, Sarah received a silver medal for her fibers and mixed-media artwork titled "2020" in the National Scholastic Art and Writings Awards. Her work is currently on display as part of the Scholastic Virtual Gallery. Sarah is part of the Visual Arts Strand of the Visual and Performing Arts Academy at Salem High School, where she is heavily involved in the girls' varsity soccer team and serves as the Vice President of Salem High School's Student Council Association. Continuing her interest in leadership and community involvement in her artwork, she works predominantly in mixed media with a sculptural emphasis and is influenced by current social issues. Congratulations, Sarah. We know your future will be bright. Tonight, we are happy to recognize Abigail Hewling. Abigail is a dual-strand student in the Visual and Performing Arts Academy, majoring in art and minoring in vocal music. On March 17th, Abigail received a silver medal for her fibers and mixed-media artwork titled "Meteor Shower" in the National Scholastics Art and Writing Awards, and her work is currently on display as part of the Scholastic Virtual Gallery. Abigail predominantly focuses on nature and abstraction of movement, light, and color, and her playful work has won her many awards, including the President's Choice Award in the Sweet Brier Regional High School Art Exhibition. After graduation, Abigail will continue her educational career at Sweet Brier College, where she plans to study archaeology and ancient studies. Congratulations, Abigail. We're excited to watch you succeed in your future. We are excited to recognize Michelle Beerly Shagoya. On March 17th, Michelle received a silver medal for her fibers and mixed-media artwork titled "Hungry Ghost" in the National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, and her work is currently on display as part of the Scholastic Virtual Gallery. Michelle is part of the Visual Arts Strand of the Visual and Performing Arts Academy at Salem High School. Over the course of her time at the VPAA, Michelle has won numerous awards for her artwork, which is predominantly digital illustrations and often has elements of mixed-media sculpture added to them for display. She has received honors from art shows at the Virginia Museum of Contemporary Arts, Neptune Festival, and was chosen as Best in Show at the VPAA Senior Art Show, and won first place at the annual VPAA Juried Art Show for 3D Design. She is currently working toward her goal of a career in the game design industry. Congratulations, Michelle. Your future will undoubtedly be filled with creativity and success. Our next recognition this evening has us honoring Marley Riddle. On March 17th, Marley received a silver medal for her photography artwork titled "Watch Me Dissolve" in the National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, and her work is currently on display as part of the Scholastic Virtual Gallery. Marley attends the Visual Arts Strand of the Visual and Performing Arts Academy at Salem High School, where she is currently developing her love of photography and film media. In her time in the academy, she has won numerous awards for her photography, both locally and nationally, and this is her second time receiving a national medal for scholastic arts. Her long-term goal is to attend the Rhode Island School of Design after high school for photography and film media. Congratulations, Marley. We are excited to see where your high school career and future take you.
Up next, we are proud to recognize Amber McWitz from Bayside High School. This spring, Amber won the National Golf Regional 5A Title for the second consecutive year, carding a score of 69, while Bayside's golf team finished first in the region. The team's win gave her the opportunity to play in both Boys' and Girls' State Tournament. In the VHSL Class V Boys' State Tournament, Amber won first place while carding a 66, which helped the Bayside team finish second in the state. The following week, in the Girls' State Tournament, she finished second. She is the first female to win a Boys' State Title in seven years and joins fewer than 10 others in VHSL history. Congratulations to Amber on this amazing accomplishment. We are so excited to see what your future holds in both sports and academics.
Next, we have a tremendous accomplishment from Cox High School. This year's Cox Field Hockey Team won the 22nd State Title. The team was led by the four senior captains, Lindsey Arsenault, Lauren Boucher, Steve Drum, and Madison Warren. Cox finished this spring and fall season with a record of 15-0. Though the season was abbreviated and played in the spring, the team was grateful to have had the opportunity to play and compete together. The team's resilience, hard work, talent, and leadership allowed the 22 student athletes to come together to win their 22nd VHSL Field Hockey State Title. Coach Roundtree said, "The parents and the Cox community were the keys to our success. Their support and encouragement were immeasurable, and we are forever grateful to have them cheering us on." And as a board, we couldn't agree more. Congratulations to all the amazing athletes of Cox High School's field hockey team. Ms. Holtz?
We are proud to recognize Ryla Nyongia. Ryla started her career in forensics in middle school, and she has continued to develop her talent in various speech events at Bayside High School. She has competed in a wide variety of speech events, including prose, serious drama interpretation, and humorous dramatic interpretation. In the last three years, she has been successful in all events in VHSL and in the Tiwata Forensic League competitions, including first place in VHSL SA Regionals in 2020. However, her talent and dedication were especially highlighted during her junior year, as she won both the Tournament of Champions with the Tiwata Forensic League and the VHSL Class V State Championships in humorous dramatic interpretation in March 2021. Congratulations, Ryla, on your amazing accomplishments. We are so excited to see what you achieve in your future.
In March, the Advanced Technology Center Coders Robotics Team, which is made up of five engineering technology too, and advanced practicum students, participated in the Coders' Sprint Challenge Pro Competition. This virtual robot programming competition was open to teams from around the world, dividing them up to compete in a regional format. The ATC team competed in the United States Northeast Region of the Coders' Spirit Challenge Pro. In this region, 27 teams from across the Northeast United States battled against each other, and the ATC team was announced the winner as of April 13th. In addition, the ATC's two additional engineering teams placed in the top 10 in the Northeast Region of the United States. Congratulations, ATC champs. We look forward to seeing other unique and exciting awards coming from your team and your school.
Now, we are happy to highlight an outstanding coach from Princess Anne High School, Coach Donnell Dozier. Coach Dozier was selected to be inducted into the VHSL Hall of Fame Class of 2020 for his accomplishments as the head girls' basketball coach at Princess Anne High School. During this time as head coach, he has amassed following stats: 23 district or conference regular season titles, 17 state tournament appearances, 15 state championship games appearances, a VHSL record, 12 consecutive state tournament trips, another VHSL record, 11 state championships, more than any in VHSL history, eight consecutive state titles, a VHSL record, and more than 650-plus career wins. Coach Dozier has also been named Supreme Coach by the Virginia Beach Sports Club. Coach Dozier is described as caring, supportive, dedicated, and determined, and he works to create relationships that helps this player excel on the court and in the classroom. Several of his elite players are continuing their careers in professional basketball. Congratulations, Coach Dozier, on these outstanding accomplishments.
Next, we have Advanced Technology Center student Stephen Gudaro. The challenge from the American Society of Materials, also known as ASM's U.S. High School Student Engineering Challenge, is to build something with your hands, research, and test it using data that can be shown. The student must also present testing and findings of the device or project by providing a photo journal of progress, as well as a two-page essay and video to be viewed by middle school students. Stephen applied his mechatronics and carpentry skills to make a material testing machine. He used soldering and coating skills to prevent precise readings. The materials testing machine is used to gain absolute strength of a given material. Stephen placed first nationally, and he will receive a $500 prize and be guaranteed a spot at the summer's Eisenman Materials Camp at ASM International Heckporters or virtually, which will be decided later. Congratulations on a job well done, Stephen.
Next, we would like to congratulate Kevin Beardsley, Director of Purchasing with the Office of Purchasing and the Department of Budget and Finance. Mr. Beardsley was named by the Virginia Association of Governmental Purchasing, also known as VAGP, as the recipient of the 2021 T. Gordon Sandridge Lifetime Achievement Award. The Virginia Association of Governmental Purchasing represents procurement professionals working in public entities in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and this award is VAGP's most prestigious award. It is presented to the individual who possesses high ethical and moral standards and has made outstanding contributions to the public procurement profession. Congratulations, Mr. Beardsley, on this tremendous accomplishment, and thank you for your hard work. And also being recognized by VAGP this year is Carla Smith. Ms. Smith is the Coordinator of Purchasing with the Office of Purchasing in the Department of the Budget and Finance, and she has been named the VAGP's 2021 Manager of the Year. VAGP is the longest procurement association in Virginia and is a chapter of the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing. All VAGP members support and promote the Virginia Beach Procurement Act and work up to elevate public procurement by supporting professionals and the entities they serve. Mrs. Smith was named Manager of the Year based on her significant contributions to the advancement of her purchasing profession and professional development. Congratulations, Ms. Smith, on this outstanding job and well done.
To conclude our recognitions this evening, we are proud to recognize the annual Virginia Beach Future Teacher Award winners. These students are selected by the principals of each comprehensive high school, as well as the Technical and Career Education Center each year. These select students participate in either the Elected Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow Course or the Early Childhood Education Program, and interested seniors are invited to participate in the selection process at their schools. Selected winners must successfully complete their class, as well as a portfolio, and participate in an interview before finalists are selected. Winners who successfully go on to complete a teacher preparation program and graduate from a university and/or college may return to Virginia Beach City Public Schools to accept a position as a teacher and/or counselor. This Grow Your Own program is an opportunity for students and the division to continue to develop and cultivate new teachers. This evening, we would like to recognize 24 outstanding students.
We are excited to present to you our 2021 Future Teacher Award recipients. From Bayside High School, Donald Labud; from Cox High School, Allison Beal; Elizabeth Byram; and Taylor Dodie; from Cox High School, Janet Greeney; Kayla Krokowski; and Dallas Wood; from First Colonial High School, Sinclair Cafferty; from First Colonial High School, Robin Waugh; from Greenerun High School, Michaela Depulso-Pull; from Callum High School, Alexa Henson; and Caleb Sullivan; from Callum High School, Lauren Westcott; from Kempsville High School, Cassandra Raymond; from Princess Anne High School, Brady Kalaha Kenner-Gresham; from Princess Anne High School, Cheyenne Reyes; Anna Schreblener; and Grace Yonker; from Salem High School, Courtney Gregg; from Salem High School, Savannah Glidewell; from the Technical and Career Education Center, Ebony Stewart; and from Tallwood High School, Rachel Bond and Isabella Fernandez. Congratulations to all 24 of these amazing students. We can't wait to see you back, teaching in Virginia Beach City Public Schools after college. This concludes the recognitions for this meeting. Again, congratulations to everyone who was recognized this evening.
Thank you all. Okay, now it's time for adoption of the agenda, and I'll first comment that we have not completed our closed-session topics. So, Action Item 12D, which is Citizen Advisory Committee Appointment Recommendations, proposing that we move that to Action 19, which would be to vote on remaining action items after our final closed session of the evening. And I believe Mrs. Hughes has something to present.
Yes, I have a resolution regarding mask and face coverings for the 21-22 school year that I would like to add to the agenda, please.
Would you like to go ahead and read it?
Yes. Whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is committed to the physical safety and emotional well-being of all students and staff, as well as being committed to providing the least restrictive environments for all students, and whereas at least 19 states have lifted all mask mandates with no increase in COVID numbers, and whereas the state of emergency expires at midnight on June 30th, 2021, and whereas all COVID mandates expire on June 30th, 2021, now therefore be it resolved that mask or face covering shall, in the absence of further statewide mandates, be optional in all Virginia Beach City Public Schools, buildings, and offices, both indoors and outdoors; that masks or face coverings will, in the absence of further statewide mandates, be optional for all Virginia Beach City Public Schools students, staff, and guests; that this policy shall be in effect beginning July 1, 2021; be it further resolved that it will not be the policy of Virginia Beach City Public Schools to either encourage or discourage any student, staff member, or guest to wear a mask or face covering.
Is there a second? Mrs. Franklin? Mrs. Riggs?
We just heard Dr. Robertson, the staff, acknowledged at this afternoon's workshop the expiration of the Governor's Emergency Order, which is June 30th, eight days away, and the Division awaits further guidance from his office and from other related agencies. So, after July 1st, with respect to this indoor student mask use for the next school year, I really think that this is kind of premature to consider this resolution tonight. We're going to hear in eight days. So, I just, that's how I feel.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Hughes?
And we are waiting to hear, you know, from the Governor what will happen statewide, but this resolution states, in the absence of statewide mandates, this is just us not requiring beyond what the state requires. If the Governor requires it, we won't have a choice, but if he doesn't, we do, and I think we should err on the side of letting parents decide for their families whether or not their children need to wear masks.
Please, order, please. Any other comment? I would just add, I appreciate what you pointed out, Mrs. Hughes, but Dr. Robertson did make reference to other agencies that we have used for guidance as well, and we're just such a short time away. I mean, I think we're just, for me, I'm just, I think it's reasonable to wait until July 1st to see what comes down the pike, and as we always do, to rely on administration to come back to us with a recommendation. We can have a further discussion at that point. That's where I'm at with this. Anybody else? All right, all in favor of this? All right, all in favor of this, adding this to the agenda?
Madam Chair?
Oh, Ms. Franklin.
I just had a question. So, do we have to do an action item tonight, or can we defer to after the first to see what happens after the first? Because I do believe that if there is not guidance, I would like to have something in place that just kind of gives us a stance on this, just so that the public is aware. However, you know, since we are eight days away, is there a way to defer until July 1 to understand what will happen and take place at that point?
Well, we have July School Board meetings and even a retreat to discuss this.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So, does this have to be, and I guess I'm just asking, does this have?
Nothing has, I mean, that's the, I think that's what some of us are expressing, that we have other, we'll have opportunities after July 1 to discuss this. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Madam Chair, if we can ask the clerk and I to ask you a question. Mrs. Hughes, where would you, if you want to ask it to be on the agenda, where are you asking? Are you asking to be information or action, as Ms. Franklin's indicated? We just clarify, where on this agenda would you ask that this be put?
I would actually prefer that this be on action. However, I'm okay with it being on information and voting on it at the first meeting in July on action.
The abridged meeting on the 6th, okay.
Yes. That's only five days out from when this would start anyway. I don't find five days to be a deal breaker, so I would be fine with it being for information tonight and action on the July, is it 6th, the July 6 meeting?
Is it July 6th, the abridged meeting? Well, yes. So, if I just clarify, just so we know the motion, and your second issue agrees to the amendment, the motion is that it be added to the information agenda for tonight's meeting with a potential vote on July 6 at the abridged meeting?
That would be fine.
So, again, abridged meetings, we haven't met yet, those are typically abridged top agendas for a reason, because it's in the midst of a two-day retreat, but we do have that meeting, and we have the July 20 meeting. Again, to await, the other option is to await staff recommendations and determine the next steps at that point. So, the motion to add this to the agenda, you're asking that it be added for information. Okay. So, all in favor of adding this resolution tonight as an information item? Show a raised hand, please. All opposed.
And we have four nays.
So, the motion fails.
All right, so that motion has failed. So, that brings us back to reordering Action Item 12D to Number 19, vote on remaining action items. Is there a second for that? Ms. Owens? Any further discussion on that? Okay, please show a raised hand to reflect your approval.
We have eight ayes.
All right, so that amendment adjustment passes. Thank you. This brings us to the Superintendent's Report.
Adoption of the agenda.
I'm sorry?
As modified.
Oh, so now, yes, so now the full agenda, I beg your pardon. So, now a motion to approve the full agenda as amended, Mrs. Riggs, and a second, Ms. Owens. Okay, all in favor, raised hand.
We have eight ayes.
Thank you. So now, Dr. Spence, we look forward to your Superintendent Report.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. So, here are just a few items of interest for you and for our families to know this evening. First, I'd like to begin by recognizing Christopher Brunel, a science teacher at Landstown High School. Mr. Brunel is only one of 10 teachers across the Commonwealth who was recently named a Cox Communications Education Hero for 2021. Landstown High School's principal, Dr. Paula Johnson, says his superpower is being able to take textbook material and make it relevant, interesting, and exciting so that each student can learn about all of the incredible science our world has to offer. Mr. Brunel is noted as having an extremely big heart and treating every person he meets with kindness and respect. His focus on the environment encourages his students to be better people to each other and the earth, and he also engages his students in ways that make them think more about the world around them and realize they're not just individuals but part of a bigger universe. His award includes a $1,000 classroom makeover. Congratulations, Chris, thank you for being a shining example of a great teacher in our school division. Tonight, I am also excited to celebrate our talented students and staff members who have been recognized by the Daughters of the American Revolution, also known as DAR. These individuals have been honored as outstanding American history students or outstanding American history teachers, and one student is honored with the Flag of the United States of America Contest Winner. I'd like to begin by first thanking the DAR for partnering with Virginia Beach City Public Schools to help us recognize our remarkable students and educators. And to all of the students named on this slide, you have not only excelled in the classroom but also shown yourselves to be responsible and engaged citizens, and there's no doubt that your future will be full of opportunity. So, we applaud you. For our teachers, thank you for continuing to inspire our students daily. Your love of history and the enthusiasm you show in your classroom encourages our students to do great things while fostering their love for education, history, and our nation. While we have not been able to celebrate in person this year with this recognition, I want to ensure each of these students and teachers that their commitment is seen and valued, and they should feel a powerful sense of accomplishment by being honored with this award. And in the coming days, make sure you check out our Division Blog, The Core, look for the link on social media for a post that will highlight these honorees. Yesterday was the Division's Custodial Appreciation Day. You know, this year's challenges highlighted the extremely important role that our custodial staff plays along with diligence and precision that they demonstrate in their roles. And thanks to the tremendous amount of hard work done by our custodial staff, I am pleased to announce that for the second year in a row, all of the Division's schools and buildings have obtained the Gold Tag Award. This Division Award was created to highlight custodial teams who have gone above and beyond with their duties and cleaning protocols. To be recognized, criteria must be met, and a 95% or better score must be achieved on the site inspection, which covers detailed areas to include making sure school entrances are clean and free of debris, the water fountains are clean, custodial uniforms are professional, our restrooms are sanitary, our hallways are burnished, locker rooms are odor-free, and that walls and windows are free of dust. And of course, all of this amazing work spans tens of thousands of square feet every single day in Virginia Beach. So, if you didn't get the chance to thank your custodial staff yesterday, just know there's no better time than now. Write or share a social media post, mail a letter of thanks, or congratulate them the next time you see them on an amazing job. Well done. We are obviously stronger as a school division because of their efforts. You can check out the hashtag VB Custodial Day to see the many messages of gratitude that have already come in, and I'd like to extend my sincerest thanks to our dedicated custodial staff for their continued commitment to VB schools. Up next, it is with great pleasure that I introduce the Division's 2021 Assistance of the Year. First, I'm very proud to recognize our Elementary Assistant of the Year, Jacqueline Guzman from Glenwood Elementary School. She is a Special Education Teacher Assistant who has worked for the school division for 20 years. During her long career here, she's volunteered for a variety of events, provided after-school tutoring, and acted as a Spanish interpreter for student IP meetings, parent-teacher conferences, student registration, and even in the school clinic. And if she wasn't amazing enough, she's also certified in Braille. And I'm honored to recognize our Secondary Assistant of the Year from the Adult Learning Center, Krista Sarlo Vargas. Crystal is a General Education Teacher Assistant, and not only does she work in collaboration with the classroom teachers on a daily basis, she also leads the test administration of the Test of Adult Basic Education, also known as the ABE, and the General Educational Development Assessment, also known as the GED. Her work and dedication are instrumental in helping students and teachers with these programs, and she was also selected as the Lead Teacher Assistant for the ABE-GED evening programs. Additionally, she's working to implement a new data management system called Empower at her school. So, congratulations to both of our outstanding staff members for an exceptional job. Well done. Thank you for leading by example, supporting our students, and going above and beyond in your role. For my last item this evening, I am proud to honor a mathematics teacher at Green Run Collegiate, Melinda Lebow. Last month, our State Superintendent, Dr. James Lane, announced Virginia's finalists for the 2021 Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, which is administered by the National Science Foundation on behalf of the White House. After review by committees and the Virginia Department of Education, Ms. Lebow was named one of Virginia's five finalists for this honor. This award is regarded as the nation's top honor for math and science teachers, recognizing educators who develop and implement high-quality instructional programs that improve student learning in mathematics. As one of the five finalists from Virginia, Ms. Lebow's application will be reviewed later this year by a national committee for her chance to be named a winner of this presidential award. We wish you all the best, Ms. Lebow, and congratulations on this tremendous accomplishment. Thank you, Madam Chair. That does conclude my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. All right, we are up to approval of meeting minutes, and we have three sets of minutes to approve. We'll take them one at a time, beginning with the May 25 regular School Board meeting. Motion to approve. Ms. Anderson?
Second.
Mrs. Riggs, any modifications? Okay, hearing none, please show your approval with a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have eight yeses.
Thank you. 9B is the June 1 Special School Board Meeting. Any modifications to these minutes? Hearing none, motion to approve. Mrs. Holtz, a second. Mrs. Hughes, please show approval with a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have eight ayes.
And finally, June 4 Special School Board Meeting. Any modifications to these minutes? Okay, hearing none, a motion to approve. Mrs. Franklin, a second. Mrs. Riggs, please show approval with raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have eight ayes.
Thank you all. That brings us to the Hearing of Citizens and Delegations on Formal Agenda Items. The School Board will now hear comments on these items from citizens and delegations who signed up with the School Board Clerk prior to this meeting. In-person speakers will be called first, followed by speakers participating through Zoom or by telephone. Speakers, we ask that you begin speaking once your name is called. As a reminder, each speaker has four minutes to present and will be given a 30-second warning before time expires. Once the speaker's term has expired, we ask that you stop making remarks to allow the next, and the next speaker will be cued to speak. Please keep in mind, the School Board invites the public to also submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. So, with that, Madam Clerk, would you introduce the first speaker of the evening, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker is Annie Palumbo.
Turn your mic on. Good evening, wow, it feels great to be here without a mask. How awesome. I hope for sure you vote for the kids to not wear them. I can't believe you didn't even want to talk about that tonight while you all breathe fresh air. That's not good. Anyway, I'd like to begin with addressing Mrs. Ry tonight. Mrs. Ry, please don't shut off the microphone on me or any of the other speakers tonight. It's unconstitutional to deny us the ability to speak freely, and it has been done in the past, and we will not stand for it. So, let's talk about why I signed up to speak tonight. Initially, a few of us saw an agenda item titled something like this, Notification of Intent to Apply for Federal Grants SEL. After I signed up, I realized either I read it wrong, along with about five others, or it had been changed to say Notification of Intent to Apply for Federal Grants School Year 21-22 without SEL mention. Where'd it go? It was a $900,000 grant, and it just poof disappeared. So, we searched, and we searched, and we searched, and we found it. Yeah, we found it. We found it on page 244 of the detailed budget description. So, now we're all confused. Was it already voted on? The deadline was June 1. Are you guys hiding something from us? Because like, where'd it go, seriously? A million dollars is a lot to just disappear. Is the School Board going to bypass almost a million dollars to fund social-emotional learning? I doubt it. To the public who is confused, is as confused as I was, let me educate you a bit on what all of this fancy, all these fancy acronyms mean. There's an organization called CASL. Its mission is to ensure social-emotional learning, better known as SEL. It's taught, its mission is to ensure that SEL is taught in all schools nationwide. So, when a grant on SEL shows up on the agenda, of course, we were going to follow the money, and follow the money we did. Come to find out, the grant is funded by the Gates Foundation as well as Zuckerberg, and most of us know what they stand for. It's not good. So, what is SEL? It's teaching our kids how to think, act, and feel, how to manage their emotions, and have healthy identities. What's that? My child identifies as a child of Jesus, Christ. Will that be taught? Since when is it the responsibility of the school to teach all of this stuff? I don't want schools teaching my kids their values. It's a teacher's job is to teach science, history, math, and English. It's not to teach them how to feel. That's my job as a mom. My family has Christian values. That's of love God and love everyone. In my research, that doesn't seem to be what you're teaching or wanting to teach, especially with SEL. So, if we can't teach our beliefs in school as followers of Christ, neither should you be able to, because I don't agree with your teachings. Teaching is to be done at home. So, I was curious to see what this CEO of CASL said, so I pulled up a video. Here's a little clip.
...who deeply know and understand the work and really are at the cutting edge of how to do it, and together, we're going to fundamentally redefine what it means to be educated in this country.
Fundamentally redefine what it means to be educated in this country. She goes on to say, "You're educating the kid's head and heart." This should alarm every human. To have a school system decide what values to teach a child?
30 seconds.
Not you as a parent is wrong in a way to create a society molded into one belief system, which is oftentimes wrong. I'm going to end my speech with a letter. I was going to. Lots of teachers reach out to us and say they do not want to teach any of this, and they are afraid to speak out. You don't care about our kids, and there's an uprising of parents, many of them sitting in this room right now, and we're going to fight, and we're not going to give up. We will not, and we're going to win, because we've got God on our side.
Order, please. Thank you.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Carol Kinsey.
Good evening.
Welcome.
School Board members and Dr. Spence, I'm a retired special ed teacher of 45 years teaching in three school systems, four schools, three states, four school systems. My experience in Virginia Beach for 41 years has been an awe-inspiring experience with colleagues, parents, and students. I'm appreciative, and I'm proud to say I taught in the school system, which was ahead of the curve. Not so much now. I'm speaking about the SEL grant. I've left messages for you regarding this topic, and I had a good hour-long conversation with one member, which showed how large the chasm is regarding our interpretation of CRT, CRP, equity, SEL, or whatever verbiage you want to use. I've read The Racial Healing Handbook, taking eight pages of notes, and can agree with teaching our students the history, the good, the bad, and the ugly, all of it. Teachers already teach and include diversity in their classrooms, speaking of various cultures, religions, and holidays. They raise awareness and reflection of the benefits of relationships outside of respective races. They stress the characteristics of good citizens, cooperation, responsibility, trustworthiness. My question to you is, why is this book, The Racial Healing Handbook, being read by teachers in several schools if the concepts included in it aren't being considered for implementation?
Excuse me, Ms. Kinsey?
Yes.
Is your topic federal grants? Because this is off-topic.
Yes, it's not about the SEL.
But you're not talking about SEL now. You mentioned something else.
Social-emotional learning, whatever verbiage you want to choose to call it.
Well, please continue, as long as you stay on the subject of social-emotional. Thank you. Please continue.
Okay. Okay. My question to you is, why do you want to use these concepts in the book? Concepts which divide and ridicule whether you're using SEL, equity, CRP, concepts that if you're white, you have two groups of the oppressed and the oppressors, teaching that if you're white, you have internalized sense of dominance, teaching that Christian privilege is a hallmark of religious privilege, teaching that adultism is the oppression of children, and that they should have agency over their own bodies and decisions. And yes, many teachers are fearful to speak out and give their opinion. If they don't agree with this divisive teaching, the backlash is real. Please don't be that school system which thinks it can end racism with more racism. And the negative from this book be, once again, the school system that I taught in years ago, ahead of the curve, investing in the positive values and talents of the strengths of all of our children. Thank you.
I do, excuse me, I do have to remind our speakers that this is the agenda portion of the speaker, of the portion of the meeting, so please limit your comments to agenda topics. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paula Chang.
Well, I'm here ironically. Well, thank you, nice to see you again. I'm here to speak of the SEL grant that was also hidden in the program, or in your agenda, and I'm going to, but I'm going to, as I have the last couple of times, gone it in a different manner. First thing I'm going to say when I start my remarks actually speaks quite well to what you just said and did, Mrs. Rye, because I'm going to bring up the U.S. Supreme Court case, because it's pertinent to the way that you have run this school board and the way that you treat us when we come here to speak. In 1964, in the case of New York Times versus Sullivan, the Supreme Court, in its opinion, employed sweeping language about the importance of the freedom of speech and the liberty of citizens in the press to criticize officials even in the most caustic vehement terms, and I will get to SEL, don't worry. And about the fundamental idea that speech on matters of public concern must be uninhibited, robust, and wide open. This means, Ms. Rye, that you must sit and listen to us, and if how we get to our point incorporates words and verbiage in sentences and subjects that you think veters off topics and gets you to move us in a different direction, you are wrong. What this Constitution case means is that you will no longer shut off the microphones or the recordings of what we say in order to inhibit our speech, which is our God-given First Amendment right. Let it be known, Mrs. Rye, who, by the way, leads the school board in its march to indoctrinating CRT and SEL, as evidenced in this agenda of this evening, that you did once, or twice, actually, I should say, while sitting up here claiming CRT, CRP, or whatever is about anti-racism, did oversee the shutting off of the microphone twice on two black men who opposed CRT and spoke of it here. And that is what you did. This ruling means that you must stop the games of changing meeting dates so we don't talk about CRT and SEL, playing with the agenda, hiding significant and important agenda items behind safety nebulously, like we can only have three feet of social distancing when many other places don't do that. And also based on no science and no law, and stop this indoctrination. If we're not safe here in this building, in this room, get a bigger one. Regarding SEL grants that are in tonight's agenda, specifically the over $939,000 grant, which was more clear in previous agendas but much more hidden, and lately, we noticed a Facebook site that, we wonder where it came from, saying that you weren't voting on CASL tonight when you actually are. Okay, I will say this. Regarding teaching of SEL and teaching of CRT, we, our group, have been reached out to by many teachers, many people in your school system who don't want to teach this, who feel oppressed by it, as speaking of oppression, and they do not want to teach this to their children because they feel that they're indoctrinating them. They fear for their jobs, they feel for the repercussions of not wanting to teach SEL, of not wanting to teach cultural responsive practices. So I say to you, Mrs. Rye, and I say to you Superintendent Spence, Superintendent Spence? Excuse me, Superintendent Spence, I know you can hear me. What do you do to combat the backlash that these employees feel? They might oppose it, if they speak of it, they get a backlash. They have an expression, backlash is real. They should not face backlash for speaking up regarding, against their...
30 seconds.
Their objection to CRT, but they are forced to do it. So we say this to them, if you are forced, if you have to take these gender classes, attend classes, read books, teach things that you don't want to, libertyloversboomerang@protonmail.com is where you should send the evidence of this teaching that you say is not real, but was up on your screen tonight at SEL. That's it. We will not expose you, we will protect you, we will destroy your email.
And that is time.
We have been receiving it. Thank you. And thank you for letting me speak, Mrs.
Our next speaker is Dan Chang.
Guess who I'm related to? Okay, my name is Dan Chang. A little background, because I did want to talk about the grants. I'm a retired naval officer and retired from Northrop Grumman as Vice President of Programs. Graduated from the Naval Academy, have a master's in financial management, and went to Harvard Business School. I developed and managed multiple five-year plans at the Department of Defense and the Pentagon, and managed a $2 billion program at NATO at Northrop Grumman. So I do know how to read budgets. I did spend the time to read the agenda and dive down into your budgets. I know after the speakers, you are going to approve, or look at, the federal grants for CASL and another one, sorry. So I'll just go into the federal grants for CASL. It's $931,000 and 71, $931,000 and 71. It's a lot of money. It was proposed by AASA, the Superintendents Association, which is partnered by Chan Zuckerberg. We all know who she is. This grant, it's in your budget sheets on page six, specifically identifies CASL. On March of 2021, AASA awarded this grant to the Virginia Beach City School System. Superintendent Spence is a member of that association. Now, accepting that grant is, requires a commitment of the school district to make SEL a strategic priority and to utilize the resources provided by the project for further SEL planning and implementation. That is an amazing statement. My question is, did the school board authorize Superintendent Spence to accept this grant from AASA? I don't know. We can't tell. Obviously, you did something, because it's on the agenda, to approve, accepting, or applying for that grant. If you look at CASL, I went on their webpage, all the other speakers have described what they do. And I really don't want to read exactly what they have on their webpage, but it's exactly that. They want to reorient our school system, our people, our students, our family, and our community. If you look at, this is their framework. It reminds me when I was in the Navy. It's called the Oodle Loop. And the Oodle Loop is what we use for planning in major military campaigns. Observe, orient, decide, and then act. This is what they're going to do to our families. They're going to observe, they're going to orient, they're going to decide, and they're going to act on what they want to teach our families, our children, our community. So, based on that, I know that you're going to review that budget item on federal grants next session, right after you hear the speakers.
30 seconds.
I propose you provide an option for the citizens here to have a say in that. The last item, and I have probably 10 seconds, is the education for English learners and immigrant students, 183K. As a son of immigrants, it appalls me that you are going to spend time and money for immigrants to teach them English. My family did not learn.
And that is time.
Please, and you're welcome to follow up with any remaining remarks via email. Okay.
I will do that, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Shay Coleman.
Welcome.
Thank you. Teachers in Virginia Beach are saying backlash is real. When speaking out against SEL, the CASL grant, or CRP, better known as CRT by its creators, they are receiving backlash. I want teachers to know that we hear you and we support you, the greater community is on your side, and we will not stop fighting. So please continue to stand up for your beliefs, what you know to be right, and we will stand up for you as you do so. School board members, you do understand why we're here, right? The more that we hear, the more that we learn and investigate the ways that you are undermining our roles as parents, while our children are on loan to you for their public education, we just continue to discover even more appalling information. Stop trying to cut us out of the equation here. You don't have a right to teach my child these certain morals that you have dictated to be above, or beneath, or equal to others. You don't have a right to teach my child how to see the world, which feelings are appropriate and which feelings are inappropriate about particular social issues. That's my job. I helped create my children, I helped grow and birth my children. The emotional welfare of my children has been entrusted to me, not to you. I've entrusted you to teach core subjects, how to be critical thinkers, and to love learning. I understand that people are going to take issue with the fact that we are opposing social-emotional learning. When you first hear and see the word "social-emotional learning," and that it innocently means teaching the whole child, it actually sounds amazing. And what type of crazy people would oppose that, right? I take several issues with social-emotional learning, and the public needs to understand the truth of what it actually is. You are through these programs trying to train children to be emotionally driven, instead of giving them the intellectual tools to be critical thinkers. It's another way of bringing separation between children and parents. You don't have a right to teach my children to be empathetic to things that I don't agree with and I'm not teaching in my home. For example, I don't need the school curriculum to teach my children to be a social warrior. I obviously am a strong activist. I'm already teaching my children to be a warrior for justice, surrounding the principles of my own conscience and that of their father. In the examples that we set for the importance of activism in our own family and in the society for which we live, we do not condone or tolerate violence as a method of activism. However, through social-emotional learning, which definitely includes cultural responsive practices, otherwise known as CRT, some Virginia Beach teachers are giving many examples and references to violent extremist groups across the country, and trying to teach children to be empathetic to that type of behavior. Another dangerous aspect of social-emotional learning is that you're going to be and have continuously been collecting data on our children, more data. You are continuously and plan to continuously ask them how they feel every moment of the day, all throughout every aspect of their curriculum, encouraging them to put their feelings above every other aspect of their being, and then recording and sending that information in via surveys. You're already doing it. Did you ask my permission to survey my teenager? No, you didn't. Your school board and this grant and this curriculum that you adopted several years ago that focuses on SEL is not acceptable. These choices are not yours alone to make. These decisions need to be in collaboration with parents. Stop ignoring us, stop trying to cut us out as part of the equation. This pressure's not going to let up. You all know that we are watching you in every single move you make, every single day. When you violate state codes...
Please, please.
You, your school board members, when you violate bylaws...
And that is time.
Especially when you violate our constitutional rights, which you have several times...
And that is time.
Rest assured, it's being documented, it's being compiled.
That is time, ma'am.
Your own takers, you are elected servants...
You can follow up, ma'am.
You swore an oath to the people that you represent, and the majority of you are failing. I suggest you change your course.
Ma'am.
The time is up.
Please, please, folks, we have to maintain decorum. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Trey Sogo.
Welcome.
Good evening. I am not here to hear myself talk. I am not here to hear myself talk, I am here to protect our children's freedom. I spent 25 years in the United States Navy as an officer in a SEAL. I spent 15 of those years with SEAL Team Six. I listened in on your Zoom call last week. You guys are incompetent. You guys are pulling this hoodoo thing, shifting things around, not taking any responsibility. Your responsibility is to the parents in this room and in this community. And you better start living up to the task, because I am telling you right now, you guys are falling way short. I don't have time for this. I gave 25 years of my life protecting this country so you could sleep comfortable at night. I am pissed off right now. I got a 10-year-old daughter. You're not going to teach her any of this horrific racism that you want to shove down our kids' throats. It is not going to happen. I'm telling you right now, y'all need to resign. The three ladies here...
Please, please.
Hughes, Manning, and Wills.
Sir, are you getting to the agenda topic?
Yes, I'm getting to the agenda. I'm talking to you right now.
Well, I haven't heard an agenda topic yet, I'm sorry.
Your CRT, and your SEL, and your T-74 is unacceptable. Do you understand that? That's what we're talking about tonight. Your actions need to be put on notice here. Y'all took an oath. You remember that oath you took? You took it in front of a judge or court clerk of the judge. You understand that? Do you remember that? Do you remember it?
Please, please.
The word oath, do you know what that means? It means a promise to tell the truth. You've been lying to us. And we're not going to put up with it no more, I'm telling you right now. Do your jobs. You voted in, we'll vote you out, or we'll have you recalled. That's part of this conversation. I am...
I'm still waiting for an agenda topic, sir.
You've got an agenda. We're not going to accept T-74, SEL, CRT, or any of your racism. My kid is not going to be molested by the crap you're trying to put in their minds. You got it? It's not going to happen. I serve my country honorably. You better start serving this public honorably, or step down, resign, effective immediately.
Our next speaker is Daphne Stagg.
Welcome. Hi, good evening. So, I came a little unprepared tonight. I was here last time, and I was taking off the agenda items and put on the next, the non-agenda items, so I just wanted to say that you are already teaching, collecting data, and have SEL, social-emotional learning, in the schools, and you are surveying the children, whether they're gay, homosexual, bisexual, transgender, pansexual, and I can't remember the other word. I don't know what that is. So anyways, that's against the policy, right, Virginia policy that I read last time. In any case in which questionnaires or surveys requesting that students provide sexual information, mental health information, medical information on a student, blah, 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 the school board shall notify the parent concerning the administration of such questionnaire or survey. So I just want the parents to know that, and the public. So you keep telling me that... So you keep telling me that, well, telling us that SEL is not CRT. So one of the school members told me to educate myself, so I went and watched some SEL videos. And it's, let's see, it was the CEO of SEL and her videos, you can find it at, oh, wrong page, sorry, SEL Cares. And in the videos, they're talking about how we have to work in our white supremacy spaces and our whiteness spaces. This is SEL, this is not. So, I mean, I'm not using any social-emotional learning that you are implementing into the schools. So I don't know how you all get along in your white supremacy positions that you have. But, let's see, in this, here, in this, this is from your agenda. It says, "Resources and training will include but not be limited in those provided through the Collaboration for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning Castle." That's in the agenda. I just wanted everybody to know. So now I have a letter from Spence, and it says, "We are currently undergoing an equity assessment." Now, we know equity is based on critical race theory. And that will identify educational equity issues in VB CPS and will lead to the creation of an equity plan and address inequities." So I have all this, let's see, "Too much data tells us that children of color and Black students in particular do not thrive in our schools. CRP makes clear that we understand how we teach them based on that, based on their skin color." Really? That, it's just horrific. Here's Compass 2025, "More deeply integrated social-emotional learning into the pre-K through 12 curriculum."
And that is time.
I don't think you understand what's going on here. You don't have a clue. You think that there's no critical race theory? It is all based on critical race theory, and you're all clueless.
Our next speaker is Julia Lagregrin.
Hi, my name's Julia Lagregrin. I'm here tonight to address SEL and also the grant that was, that has been received by Virginia Beach Public Schools. I wanted to start with good news. The good news is I looked up some data. Virginia is currently ranked, or according to the 2018 ISSA, ranked fourth of 50 states academically in the United States. And we're fourth not only for academics but also in safety, which is pretty darn good. That puts us in the 90th percentile in the United States. However, also in the 2018 International Student Assessment Testing, we've learned that the U.S. is 11th of 79 developed nations in math, oh, excuse me, in science. We're behind Poland, Ireland, and Japan, as well as a few other countries. In math, it's even worse. We're 30th. That means in math, we're in the 62nd percentile in the entire developed world. That's a failing grade. That's an F. The consequence of our failure of our students is that our jobs, our high-paying, high-tech jobs are being outsourced to students who can perform the tasks that are required. That means lower-paying jobs in the United States. That means less stability in the future for our country. It really, our children are the future of our country. So then I hear, I recently learned about SEL, social-emotional learning. And so I looked up, what the heck is that? Develop healthy identity, manage, help children learn how to manage their emotions, help them achieve personal and academic goals, show empathy for others, establish and maintain stable and supportive relationships. This was the definition of social-emotional learning. To me, that sounds a lot like what parents are supposed to do. So when we're already failing on the world stage in academics, how could teachers have the time to teach parents' responsibilities to our children in the classroom? Time is the only thing we all have control of. Our students should have control of their time, our teachers should have control of their time, and our parents should have control of their time. Let the parents do their jobs. Let the parents take care of children's social and emotional learning. You need to stick to the academics. What we need to do as a group, parents, teachers, and students, is communicate with each other's. We need to set standards and achieve them as a group. We need to communicate when a student is failing in the achievement of their goals. What are we going to do to help the students succeed? It doesn't matter what a student's skin color is, what their socioeconomic background is. The idea is to put together individual plans for individual students to achieve excellence in our school system and in their jobs. Thank you very much, and that's all I've got.
Madam Chair, we're going to move on to our online speakers. Our first online speaker is Jean Baker. Please unmute.
Hi, I am Jeannie Baker. I am here to speak about accepting federal grant money for social and emotional learning. You have to read the Title I, Part A, "Improving Basic Programs on the Federal Application" to realize funds will be going to social and emotional learning. I could tell right away because the buzzword "evidence-based research," that is right in the beginning under "use of funds." Evidence-based research is the rubber-stamp phrase used for social and emotional learning to make it sound legitimate. It's the technique that if you repeat something long enough, people will believe it. Next, I see the word equity, which is being politically pushed by our schools to further socialism. Lastly, the end of the very last sentence says, "as well as social-emotional learning." Let the schools and the teachers do what they do best, educate. Let the parents and the families do values teaching. I'm sure some of you would not want me teaching my values to your kids, just like I don't want you to teach mine yours. And all of us should be concerned with government-established social and emotional learning norms for morals, beliefs, and attitudes for our children. If we are accepting grant money, let's use it for things such as getting our kids caught up from the disrupted school year. I will continue to enlighten my friends and neighbors about the social curriculum that is in our school system. Not everybody is able to do all the research, but I will do my part and share what I learn. I won't stop. In addition, after listening to the previous speakers, I'll also make sure I let them know that the public is being shut down if they're saying things that the chairwoman does not like, does not want to hear. In addition, I request school board members and anyone listening tonight to read this great piece you can find on the web called "Critical Race Theory: What It Is and How to Fight It" by Christopher Rufo. Critical Race Theory: What It Is and How to Fight It by Christopher Rufo, R-U-F-O. I encourage you to read it to learn some history on the subject. Social and emotional learning is part of critical race theory. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker, Paula Eklund, asked to be taken off, so we're going to move on to Maria Theresa Saland. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Teresa, please unmute. We'll move on to our next speaker, Diana Howard. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Unmute, okay. I was at Congressman Laurie's Town Hall yesterday.
I am, sit out of order.
Hello, you can hear me, right?
We have Ms. Howard on right now. She'll be next. Got it.
Okay. I was at Congresswoman Laurie's Town Hall last night, and one of the questions she was asked was, did she support CRT being taught in our schools? And she did not, and she said that they weren't being taught in our schools and that the Department of Education, the federal government, had no involvement in writing curriculum. And she's right, but the federal government is involved in pushing it, not by writing the curriculum, but by funding it with our tax revenue. And I talked to her aide there, and I told him I would send him this link, and I'll send it to you, too. On April 19, 2021, the Biden Administration proposed a rule that would allow the Department of Education to prioritize recipients to receive K-12 grants that you're applying for if they include critical race theory in their curriculum. Okay? The department proposes two priorities to support the development of culturally responsible, responsive teaching and learning, projects that incorporate racially, ethnically, culturally, linguistically diverse perspectives into teaching and learning due to the ongoing national reckoning with systematic racism, having highlighted the urgency of improving racial equity throughout our society, including in our education system. Okay? And it wanted to highlight the unbearable human cost of systemic racism, right? Our nation deserves ambitious, whole-of-government equity agenda that matches the scale of the opportunities and challenges that we face. And in it, it acknowledges, for example, the New York Times 1619 Project and the resources of the Smithsonian National Museum of African-American History. Now, the New York Times Project has been heavily criticized by historians as inaccurate. Even the World Socialist website notes that despite the pretense of establishing the United States True Foundation, the 1619 Project is a politically motivated falsification of history. It presents and interprets American history entirely around the prism of race and racial conflict. Okay? And it doesn't, the proposal does not mention that the Times editor issued a correction to the 1619 Project after a high-profile criticism from scholars who said the project's claims about colonists fighting the American Revolution to protect slavery were wrong, nor does the Federal Register say anything about how project editors refuse to correct other factual inaccuracies and after criticism from Pulitzer Prize-winning researchers. Right? So also on that SEL policy at the federal levels, there has been a major study that was released on it, right? The study reaches several important conclusions. Proponents of SEL call for focusing less on academic content and knowledge in schools and more on students' attributes, mindsets, values, and behaviors. Not only are the goals of SEL ill-defined, but they also raise significant unanswered questions about what attitude should be promoted. It's one thing to direct your own moral, ethical, and emotional development on that of your children.
Ms. Howard, that is time.
Ms. Howard, feel free to follow up with the email for remaining comments, okay, ma'am? Thank you.
Our next, please. Our next speaker is Maria Theresa Salud. Please unmute.
Salud.
Okay, Teresa, go ahead. Hi, my name is Maria Theresa Salud, as you already know, and I just want to address you about the Castle Grant. I don't agree with Castle Grant's social-emotional learning or equity training and teaching or CRP. At first glance, it all sounds benign. After thorough research, one misbehave is nothing but a ploy to teach racism, the very entity the school district faculty is supposedly against. Fortunately, courageous teachers have shared facts of your teacher trainings and school lessons already being taught, which you have intentionally kept hiding. Backlash is real for teachers that speak out against CRP and SEL. That must stop. We have a hard enough time recruiting and retaining stellar teachers. Now, school board members want to drive them out? It all adds up to several pompous elected school board members allowing teachers to be trained to mentally abuse our children. Mental abuse, according to WebMD.com. Mental abuse is meant to undermine your self-esteem and make you feel worse about yourself. It also, a form of manipulation and control. Healthline.com states actively working to turn others against you, trying to come between you and your family, telling white kids that they are oppressors and Black and Brown children that they are oppressed is just despicable, illustrating mental abuse upon the students entrusted to you by their parents. Now, I don't know exactly all the tactics and phrasing teachers are utilizing in the classroom, but I can only imagine it is very subtle in order to not be recognized by elementary students. In life, the insidious nature of the mental abuse being inflicted on our impressionable minds. School administration used to welcome parental cooperation in teaching their children, but now you've cut parents completely out. Educators need to simply stick to reading, writing, mathematics, science, and factual history. Teachers shouldn't be burdened with teaching social and emotional topics that should be left to the parents. I'm multiracial and brown, according to your definition, but you don't be, but don't be fooled because I also have white ancestry as well. So I'm both an oppressor and oppressed at the same time. I still believe in Martin Luther King's "I have a dream speech." I like that we celebrate his philosophy about judging a person based on their character. Each and every adult needs to model the behaviors and characters we want to be prominent in our society going forward, such as kindness, respectfulness, caring, empathy, understanding, open-minded, good listening skills, compromise, ethics, and hard work. We each, will each of you step up and be a better leader with the previously mentioned qualities making you worthy of being emulated? If not, those with the means and ability to permanently do the shift will do so. I have already begun, it has already begun. That is why you are going to use Castle Grant to penetrate the private schools as stated. Funds will be used to provide equitable services for participating private schools through professional development and related travel in the May 14, 2021 Title II, Part A, detailed budget description for Object Code 5000.
That is time.
And thank you very much. Please.
Madam Chair, that was our last agenda speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to the consent agenda.
All items under the consent agenda are enacted on by one motion. And I will read the following. A, notification of intent to apply for federal grants, SY 202122. B, Policy Review Committee Recommendations. One, Policy 437, insurance plans. B2, Policy 631, gifted and talented students. B3, Policy 641, computer literacy. C, religious exemption. D, School Board Organizational Matters, three components, superintendent's designee in the absence of the superintendent. Two, superintendent's signature authority. Three, payroll deductions. Motion to approve. Mrs. Anderson and Second, Mrs. Holtz. Okay, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Do you want to apply for the grant?
Please.
We have seven ayes.
All opposed.
And we have one day.
Order, please. Order, please.
And that's all right.
Okay, all right, action. Excuse me. Action, that brings us to the action portion of the agenda. A, Personnel Report Administrative Appointments, Motion to Approve. Mrs. Riggs, Second. Miss Owens. All in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have eight ayes.
Thank you. Dr. Spence, I, you have a number of appointments to announce this evening.
We do, it's that time of year, Madam Chair. Thank you. I'd first like to start by acknowledging Dr. Alastair Reddy. Dr. Reddy has served with distinction as a teacher at Rosemont Elementary School. She's served with distinction in Virginia Beach as an Assistant Principal at Arrowhead Elementary School. Most recently, has been serving as the Assistant Principal at Three Oaks Elementary School. This evening, I am very pleased the board has accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next principal at Princess Anne Elementary School. Congratulations to Dr. Reddy. I'd also like to point out Courtney Scarselli. Ms. Scarselli has served as a teacher at Princess Anne Elementary School and Assistant Principal at Red Mill Elementary School. She has been serving, most recently, as an Assistant Principal at W.T. Cook Elementary School. We're very pleased this evening you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next principal of Malibu Elementary School. Congratulations to Ms. Scarselli. Like to recognize Letitia Wilson. Ms. Wilson has served with distinction as an educator across Virginia. Most recently, has been serving in Albemarle County, where she has served as an Assistant Principal at Henley Middle School and Greer Elementary School. Most recently, has been serving as a principal of Stony Point Elementary School in Albemarle County. And we're pleased this evening you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next principal of Newtown Elementary School. Like to also recognize Carly Young. Ms. Young has served with distinction as an educator in Hampton City Public Schools. She has most recently served as Assistant Principal at Tarrant Elementary School and currently serving as principal at Aberdeen Elementary School. And we are pleased you've accepted our recommendation for Ms. Young to serve as the next principal of Birdneck Elementary School. Congratulations to her. Moving on to middle schools, like to recognize Tamara Cornick. Dr. Cornick has served with distinction in Virginia Beach as a teacher, a school improvement specialist, and Assistant Principal. Most recently, has been serving as Assistant Principal at Great Neck Middle School. And we're pleased you've accepted our recommendation for Dr. Cornick to serve as the next principal of Kempsville Middle School. Congratulations to her. I'd also like to recognize Gabriel Howard. Mr. Howard has served with distinction as an educator in Michigan and here in Virginia Beach as a teacher at Allington Elementary School, Great Neck Middle School, where he has also served as a gifted resource teacher. And we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Mr. Howard to serve as the next Assistant Principal at Great Neck Middle School. Like to acknowledge Lucas Witham. Mr. Witham has served with distinction as a teacher in York County and most recently as Assistant Principal at TAB Middle School in the York County School Division. We're pleased this evening you've accepted our recommendation for him to serve as the next Assistant Principal at Landstown Middle School. I'd also like to recognize Robert R.V. Yoshida. Mr. Yoshida has served with distinction as an educator across Virginia, with most of his time in Fairfax County as a teacher, Assistant Principal, and Principal. He's recently been serving as the principal at Birdneck Elementary School. We're pleased this evening you've accepted our recommendation for him to serve as the next principal at Corporate Landing Middle School. I'd also like to recognize Bridget Berthold. Ms. Berthold has served as a teacher in Norfolk Public Schools, Green Run High School. She's been a school improvement specialist at Green Run High School, administrative assistant in that building. We're pleased you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next Assistant Principal at Green Run High School. Next, I'd like to recognize David Brown. Mr. Brown has served as a Special Education Assistant, a teacher at Tallwood High School and the Technical and Career Education Center, and most recently with distinction as an Administrative Assistant at Virginia Beach Middle School. We're pleased you've accepted our recommendation for him to serve as the next Assistant Principal at Bayside High School. Like to recognize Sally Jarvis Lovey. Dr. Lovey has served with distinction as a teacher, a behavioral specialist, Assistant Principal in California, most recently serving as an Assistant Principal in the Orland High School Unified School District. And we're pleased you've accepted our recommendation for Dr. Lovey to serve in Virginia Beach as the next Assistant Principal at Bayside High School. I'd also like to recognize Troy Walton. Mr. Walton has served with distinction in Virginia Beach as a teacher at Bayside High School, Salem Middle School, Bayside Middle School. He's been a Dean of Students and Assistant Principal in the division, most recently serving as an Assistant Principal at Bayside High School. We're pleased you've accepted our recommendation this evening for him to serve as the next principal of Bayside High School. Also like to recognize Dwight Durin, CPA. Mr. Durin has worked with distinction in the field of accounting across numerous trade industries. Most recently, has been serving as a Budget Specialist in Portsmouth Public Schools. We're pleased this evening you've accepted our recommendation for him to serve as the next Coordinator of Accounting in the Department of Budget and Finance. And finally, I'd like to recognize Felicia Shepherd. Ms. Shepherd has served with distinction as a teacher across Virginia, including Southampton County Public Schools, Chesapeake Public Schools, and Portsmouth Public Schools. Most recently, has been serving as a Special Education Program Specialist in Portsmouth Public Schools. We're pleased you've accepted our recommendation for her to serve as the next Coordinator of Special Education in the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. Madam Chair, that is all.
Thank you, and the best wishes to these new administrators. And many of them have big shoes to fill, but we have faith that they will. All right, action item B, Salary Resolution Fiscal Year 2122. Before we take motions, I'm going to ask Ms. Anderson to read it, please.
Whereas the mission of the Virginia Beach City Public Schools in partnership with our entire community is to ensure that each student is empowered with the knowledge and skills necessary to meet the challenges of the future. And whereas the school board has adopted a comprehensive strategic plan and school improvement priorities to guide budgetary decisions. And whereas the school board has studied the recommended school operating budget in view of state and federal requirements, additional demands for space and operations, the strategic plan, priorities, expectations, competitive compensation for employees, and the best educational interest of its students. And whereas the school board proposed operating budget has been reconciled to meet the funding amounts of all funding sources, including the funding from the city council. And whereas all employees will receive a 4.5% cost of living COLA adjustment, and all employees on steps 1 through 30 will receive an additional 0.5% step increase. And whereas the instructional experience-based and unified experience-based step scales and part-time hourly rates titled below and as shown in the attachments are approved and will be effective as shown below. And whereas the percent of compensation increases and the effective dates of the increases are shown below. Attachment A, Alphabetical Listing of Instructional Positions. Attachment B, Instructional Experience-Based Step Pay Scale 7121 to 63022. Attachment C, Unified Experience-Based Step Pay Scale Assignments. Attachment D, Unified Experience-Based Step Pay Scale from 7121 to 63022. Attachment E, Part-Time Temporary Hourly Rates, Same As Current Year Except For Noted Exceptions From 7121 to 63022. Attachment F, Table Of Allowances, School Year 2021 to 2022. Attachment G, Supplements, School Year 2021 to 2022. And Attachment H, Student Activity Rates, School Year 2021 to 2022. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the board adopts the salary scales and the compensation increases as outlined in this resolution and attachments adopted by the school board this 22nd day of June 2021.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve. Mrs. Riggs, Second. Mrs. Holtz. Okay, discussion, and we have Mr. Hansiger with us, our Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Ms. Reye. Well, the resolution says it all for the benefit of Ms. Franklin, because she was not a school board member during this time last year. The resolution, salary resolution, is just simply the authorization for the administration to implement the salary schedules and all the attachments. It's also a public document that our employees can refer to. People in the community certainly can refer to, which would be on our website. I will say that the, these funds are included in the operating budget for FY 2122 and that they're also budgeted in the various funds and budget unit codes for FY 2122. And I'm happy to answer any questions. This is school board approval. It does not have to go to the city council.
Colleagues. All right, then, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have eight ayes.
Thank you. We have three Policy Review Committee Recommendations on for action tonight, beginning with Appendix B, School Board Standing Rules, Motion to Approve. Mrs. Riggs, Second. Mrs. Felton, Discussion. All right, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
We have eight ayes.
Thank you. Policy PRC C2 is Appendix C, School Board Standing Committee Procedures, Motion to Approve. Mrs. Anderson, Second. Ms. Franklin, Discussion or Questions? All right, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have eight ayes.
Thank you, and C3 is Policy 541, Student Dress and Grooming Code, Motion to Approve. Mrs. Holtz, Second. Ms. Owens, okay, questions or discussion? Ms. Franklin.
So I know that we discussed the dress codes. Did, I'm just a little bit confused about, what is the final recommendation, then, that we're voting on tonight?
The recommendation coming forward, you had made some suggested changes. One of those, I know, was in C2. The question had come up about how you were going to secure tops. I believe Ms. Manning, Ms. Hughes had asked that we'd worked at it, look at that again. Under C2, dress and grooming standards, and C2 is a student must wear opaque clothing that covers the student's chest from under the armpits, parentheses, where they meet the shoulder, and parentheses, and is secured over the shoulders of the neck to no less than five inches below the groin area. We added the language of securing over the neck, that was one of the questions in there. I know that Mrs., and I'm trying to think if I can see where it is, Mrs. Manning asked that during the resolution, that would be the student. Section D1, under temporary resolutions, the sentence, the first sentence, the Dress and Grooming Code provided to students and families will detail how an infraction will be temporarily resolved if the student or the parent, legal guardian, or minor student disagrees with the school administration's change. I think it shows up one more time. We listed initially the student, Mrs. Manning asked that we include the parent or legal guardian of a minor student, so that was added back in. Most of the dress code has changed significantly. Some of this came as a requirement by the General Assembly that we make it gender-neutral and equally applied to individuals, so we read a lot of the dress code, as we mentioned last time. But those were the two recommendations since the information agenda that we bring back to you, PRC did look at those changes and approved those. Are there any other questions I can ask, answer? All right, then, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have eight ayes.
Thank you. So again, the Advisory Committee Appointments have been deferred until later in the meeting. That brings us to action item E, School Board Committee and Liaison Assignment Recommendations. Before I ask for a motion, I will quickly go through the recommendations. Beginning with internal audit, Jennifer Franklin, Kimberly Melnick, Jessica Owens, and Larry Davenport as the citizen member. Policy review, Beverly Anderson, Lori Hughes, Trenace Riggs. Planning and performance monitoring, Beverly Anderson, Sharon Felton. Give me a moment. And Dorothy Holtz. Governance, School Board Chair, Audit Chair, PPM Chair, PRC Chair, and Beverly, which are all codified, and Mrs. Anderson. Legislative, Sharon Felton, Victoria Manning, Trenace Riggs. Building utilization, Lori Hughes, Jessica Owens, Carolyn Weems. Student Discipline Committee, One, Sharon Felton, Jennifer Franklin, Lori Hughes. Committee Two, Victoria Manning, Jessica Owens, Carolyn Weems. Committee Three, Beverly Anderson, Dottie Holtz, and Trenace Riggs. Then we have our Joint Standing School Board and City Council Committee/Boards, Committees/Boards. We have CIP Modernization Review Committee. Dorothy Holtz and Victoria Manning as Chair. That's a, that's a school board chair designated Chair appointment, and Beverly Anderson is alternate. The In-House Pharmacy Exploratory Committee, which we are recommending, is better suited to outside committees, but I'll announce it here. Kimberly Melnick and Trenace Riggs, who were previously appointed, and my understanding is recently approved by city council, but we need to still approve their continuation. I'm a little frozen here, bear with me, please. We got a hard copy coming, okay? Thank you. Then we have School Board Standing Committees with School Board Member Liaisons, school, excuse me, School Division Standing Committees with School Board Member Liaisons. Equity Council, Jessica Owens, Carolyn Weems, and Kimberly Melnick is alternate. 403B Plan Oversight Committee, Victoria Manning. And outside committees, Green Run Collegiate, where school board members serve as liaisons to report back to the board. Green Run Collegiate Charter Board, Kimberly Melnick, alternate Jennifer Franklin. Governor's School for the Arts, Kimberly Melnick, alternate Beverly Anderson. Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities, Victoria Manning and Trenace Riggs, alternate. Southeastern Cooperative Educational Programs, otherwise known as CSIP, Kimberly Melnick and Beverly Anderson, alternate. Virginia School Board Association Voting Delegate at the Annual Convention in Williamsburg. Sharon Felton and Dorothy Holtz, alternate. Hampton Roads Educational Telecommunications Association, better known as WHRO Advisory Committee. Dorothy Holtz with Jennifer Franklin is alternate. Sister Cities Association of Virginia Beach. Sister Cities Association of Virginia Beach, Trenace Riggs and Beverly Anderson, alternate. 457 Deferred Compensation Board, Beverly Anderson. Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission, Jennifer Franklin with Dorothy Holtz is alternate. And finally, our Citizen Advisory Committees. Special Education Advisor, and again, these are liaison assignments. Special Education Advisory Committee, Carolyn Weems with Jennifer Franklin is alternate. General Advisory Council for Technical and Career Education, Sharon Felton with Jennifer Franklin is alternate. Community Advisory Committee for Gifted Education, Jennifer Franklin with Laura Hughes is alternate. Inter-Agency Adult Basic Ed Advisory Committee, Laura Hughes with Dorothy Holtz is alternate. And the School Health Advisory Committee, Carolyn Weems with Laura Hughes is alternate. So with that, I want, Chair will entertain a motion to approve. Mrs. Riggs, a second. Mrs. Hughes, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please show approval with a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have eight ayes.
Thank you. So that brings us now to the information portion of the meeting, and we welcome Mrs. Lanetti to discuss the legal service, the annual Legal Services Cooperative Agreement. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Cammy Lanetti, Deputy City Attorney for Public Education. Tonight I bring you on the information agenda, our annual cooperative agreement. The Cooperative Agreement for Legal Services is an agreement that is entered into between the City Council and the School Board. You have entered into this contract since 1996. At each where we provide legal services in-house for you. This year, again, we've been asking that you approve the cooperative legal services agreement. For the legal services agreement, your agreement requires that we provide you three in-house attorneys. I am one of them. Danielle Hall-McIver is the other one. As you know, we lost Mr. Simmons last year. He went back to private practice. We are in the process of hiring a new Associate City Attorney, hopefully sometime later this summer that will come in. In addition to that, you pay for the services of half of what would be equivalent to a full-time attorney out of the City Attorney's Office. The City Attorney's Office has 22 other attorneys. You've often seen Rebecca Kubin in here. She comes in for your real estate. Debbie Bryant would come in. Sometimes you see some of other attorneys, depending if you've got litigation matters or some other issues that you deal with. Those attorneys are paid for out of this agreement. They come over as needed, so you don't have them on full-time. In addition, you also pay for a paralegal for our office and an office associate and relative expenses. The cost for this agreement is $673,877.27. And there, as we've noted for your prior years, I will not be able to tell you until July 1st what our final hourly rate is, but generally our hourly rate is somewhere between $99 and $110 an hour, depending on the amount of hours we've worked for you this year. This amount is significantly lower than you would pay if you went up for outside counsel. Outside counsel for a general associate is roughly about $250, so you're receiving these rates as significantly lower rate than you would if you had higher outside counsel. Again, we are pleased to be able to provide these services for you and a longstanding relationship. Tonight, normally, we would have presented this to you at an earlier meeting, but as this came, would have scheduled for an early meeting in June, we do need to ask that you move it to the further action items later tonight so it can be in place and effective on July 1st for payroll purposes. Are there any questions I can provide to you relative to the provision of service under the cooperative agreement?
So, Mrs. Lanetti, you're asking that we add this to the voting on remaining items?
It's already on the agenda.
We, we've moved it down there because it's necessary for the agreement to be in place. We also had to send it to City Council, so we have to get it over there. So we're asking that you approve it tonight so it can be sent to City Council and we can arrange for payroll and that the services remain effective on July 1st. Yes, ma'am.
But now is the time for questions. All right, looks like we're good.
Thank you.
Information Item B, interim financial reports. Welcome, Ms. Pete.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Ry, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, School Board Members, Dr. Spence. As of May 31st, the overall revenue trend remains acceptable at this point in the fiscal year, as illustrated in this first graph. The Virginia Department of Education released the final fiscal year 2021 payment calculation template this morning. A revised projection of state revenue is a surplus of approximately $626,000 for the year. As you may recall, the General Assembly Special Session, there was a requirement placed on the Virginia Department of Ed to adjust the COVID-19 Relief Fund payments based on actual sales tax distributions to school divisions. For the state as a whole, the estimated fiscal year 2021 sales tax distributions equaled $1.51 billion, whereas actual sales tax distributions came in at $1.63 billion. So the magnitude of this difference between estimated and actual sales tax distributions eliminated the COVID-19 Relief Fund state payment for fiscal year 2021, and for us, that was a decrease of about $630,000. Just to give you a perspective, for our hard division, the state's estimated sales tax distribution for '21 equaled $79.8 million, and our actual sales tax distribution is coming in at $86.1 million, and that's about $6.2 million over the state's projection, which is approximately $638,000 over our original budget that was billed at the beginning of this year. There was also, in the Special Session Acts of Assembly, another requirement for Virginia Department of Education to adjust 2021 state payment for the no-loss payment funding, and that was based on technical updates and increase in revenues. The increase to the sales tax distributions also required VDOE to reduce the no-loss payments to school divisions, and for us, that resulted in our funding for this source to go from approximately $16 million in the General Assembly's adopted budget down to approximately $14 million. We're also seeing a decrease from our original budget for the special ed regional program payment of approximately $2.1 million, and that is based on a change by the state on how we are reimbursed for intensive need students. Federal revenues continue to show a favorable trend as of the end of May. Year-to-date, we have received approximately $2.4 million over our budget. This is mainly due to impact aid payments, and we also received notice of our Medicaid cost report reimbursement for the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2020, and our school division is to receive $1,464,000, which we posted and reflected in June's financial statements. As mentioned in previous presentations, our other sources of revenue year-to-date through May are still lower than normal. We did see some pickup in sale of capital assets, vehicles, buses, and the stop-arm enforcement program in the latter part of the year. We've also seen some tuition charges for regular day, the LPN program, and driver's ed post, but overall, we will be below budget for the year, and it will probably come in unfavorable when we close the books due to the effects of COVID on facility rentals and program tuition. This next graph shows that sales tax receipts are at an acceptable level. Year-to-date through May, we are approximately $4.5 million higher than the same time last year, and for June, we are showing an increase in sales tax receipts from June of last year of approximately $1.9 million. Our last graph shows the expenditures and encumbrances trend, and that continues to remain acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. We are eight days away from the end of the year, and we are in the process of closing out the end of the year, and we'll be looking at numbers very closely on a regular basis. And that concludes the presentation. Be glad to answer any questions the Board may have.
Colleagues? Okay, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So that brings us to the Community Advisory Committee for Gifted Education Report, and good evening to you.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Chairwoman Ry, and School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Nicole DeVries, the Director of K-12 and Gifted Programs, and I'm here on behalf of the Gifted Community Advisory Committee to present their annual report and recommendations for this year. You'll find in your School Board packet the complete report for your review. As a reminder, the local plan for gifted education that was approved last fall focuses on the six areas that you see on your slide. Unlike in years past, site visits were not conducted by CAC members this year due to COVID mitigations being in place. However, the Gifted CAC continued to meet, addressing a variety of topics throughout the year. These topics included changes to the gifted application, assessment procedures, and old donation school selection process. There was also a student panel in which two students, who are ex-officio members, shared their experiences as part of the gifted program, as well as their experiences as an Option One and an Option Two student. One of our students was an Option One student, and one was a virtual student, and it was interesting to hear their perceptions and their views of instruction. One of the students on the committee recorded her thoughts, and we included a link to it in your full School Board report. We encourage you to take a look at it. She was very articulate. Teachers also presented to the committee during the year their approaches to supporting gifted learners' social, emotional well-being as they navigated this school year together. In addition, the Gifted CAC participated in an equity focus group as part of the equity audit. Based on discussions that took place this year during the Gifted CAC meetings and as a reflection of what had been presented to the CAC this year by the gifted leadership team, GRTs, and students, the CAC presents the following recommendations. In the area of identification, the Gifted CAC members are confident that the recommendations made last year regarding revisions to the identification and placement process will continue throughout the next school year. In the area of delivery of services, the CAC recommends to continue to support building administrators in their support of gifted programs. Additionally, they recommend that we explore access and opportunities for gifted students outside of what may be available to them at their home schools. This may include master classes and other enrichment programs and opportunities that would be collaborative across schools. They also recommend that the gifted program continues to strengthen its collaboration with families and other offices, such as student support services, who we work very closely with. In the area of curriculum development, the CAC recommends that gifted programs work to increase problem-based learning and cross-curricular opportunities for gifted learners. In the area of professional development, CAC recommendations include increasing training for gifted cluster teachers and GRTs, specifically in the areas of characteristics of gifted learners, and participation in the gifted badge and courses that were implemented this year. They also encourage the continued use of Zoom and Google Meet as a way to engage families and staff. The CAC recommends the following in the area of parent and community involvement. First, to capitalize on the momentum of virtual connections with families, as well as provide a consistent division message about gifted programming by offering a welcome-back-to-school presentation at the division level. Additionally, they recommend that we continue to collect feedback from families of gifted learners to identify their needs and supports that we may offer to meet those needs. The CAC would also like for the revised gifted site on bbschools.com to continue to be a central location for staff and families to find current information about BBCPS gifted programs. The final CAC recommendations address the area of equitable representation. They recommend that the school division allocates additional TEA staff to increase support for schools that have higher percentages of gifted learners, as well as for those schools that have unique programs, which result in a need for additional cluster, gifted cluster classrooms, such as with the dual-language immersion program. This concludes the recommendations from the Gifted Community Advisory Committee. Joining me this evening is Mrs. Jo Campbell. She is the Gifted CAC Chair, and we are available to answer any questions that you may have.
Colleagues? Yeah, I wanted to cite Mrs. Franklin as our liaison to the Advisory Committee, so please proceed.
I just wanted to commend your group. I am fortunate enough to be privy to our time in terms of discussion, and this group, as I'm sure most groups, really do take their roles seriously. I think they do a great job evaluating what they need to do to just continue to grow the program. I would like you to explain or just comment about the testing. I know that there was some differences this year, and so I know that there was some discussion about that throughout the year, and if you could just bring to the Board, you know, the testing methods and what we're going to do in the future.
Sure, so I can give you a bit of some background. So we came to the Board earlier this year to ask for permission to make an adjustment to our, what we had, what had been previously approved in our local plan for gifted education, for gifted testing, mainly because of the COVID situation, that we simply were not able to use the screener tool that we usually use, which was the Naglary screener tool, and so we received approval to move ahead and use the COGAT screener, which we use, the full battery COGAT test for our gifted identification testing process, so we used that as well. The other difference is that, of course, we had to find a way to do that in a very short period of time, a condensed period of time. Usually, we have three to four months, and we had three to four weeks, and so we really want to acknowledge our gifted resource teachers who stepped up and did an amazing job helping out with the assessments for students in the buildings, and usually, we have a team of assessment specialists who usually go out and do that, so that was a bit of a change this year because of the situation we found ourselves in. So we hope to, you know, some good things and some good feedback came out of that, but we hope to return to somewhat of a normal circumstance with testing next year, and we look forward to all of that happening.
Anybody else?
Mrs. Hughes, and then, I'm sorry, Ms. Owens, and then Mrs. Hughes.
Thank you. Okay, just a quick question on the recommendations. Could you elaborate just a little bit on if there's currently a ratio for GRTs to students when we're looking at the allocating some additional employees at areas where we have higher concentrations of gifted, and what that disparity is looking like that's bringing us to that recommendation?
So there is a gift, there is in the SOQs, there is an allocation for, or there's a recommendation for how to staff that, unless there is a student-to-GRT ratio, which we meet already. When we look at how we go about implementing our gifted program using the cluster model, what we do is we designate, and each school principal's designate, teachers who become the cluster teachers, and the recommendation is that there is a third, no more than a third of the students in the class are identified as gifted. That typically works, but sometimes when we have a unique program like the dual-language immersion program, let's say, where you might have now students who are choosing to be in that program, who are also gifted, and the gifted cluster teacher is sitting in the, outside of that program, then we have to then think about how do we cluster those students together as well, and so extra support is then needed to be able to, you know, not spread the GRT so thin that she can't provide, she or he can't provide, you know, the necessary supports to those students.
Okay, thank you. So it tends to, from what you're describing, primarily an issue in our schools that have the dual immersion programs, or are there other schools that are also seeing this?
There are some other schools that have higher percentages of students that are identified as gifted, where I'm sure GRTs could, would like to see some support, and they, they feel like they're stretched thin, and that's some of the feedback we've received. Again, we're within our, you know, our SOQ staffing guidelines for that, but, but as we, you know, adjust our identification process and, and we're identifying students in a more equitable way, we're going to see that increase, and we're, and GRTs are going to want that support.
Mrs. Hughes?
I have had parents reach out stating that they have children that have tested well, who have wanted to test into ODS, yet they are not able to go there because there's a lottery system, and they are told that the programs at their children's home schools are every bit as rigorous, is what they would receive at ODS. If that is the case, I don't, how would you respond to that? Why are we not having the highest testers?
So our selection process for ODS is currently based on a holistic process. There is, there are multiple criteria in a portfolio that students submit, so it's not based on test scores solely, although their identification test scores are one thing that, that the committee currently looks at, but it's one component of about six or seven, and so the committee looks across all of those components to determine if that student, if the school is the best fit for the student. And so we always try to emphasize that with the committee, that this isn't, is the student the best fit for the school, but is the school the best fit for the student? And, and what do we ask them to look for? We ask them to look for evidence across those application components, that the student needs something far above and beyond what is currently offered through the division curriculum, as well as what's provided in the gifted cluster program. So the difference between ODS and the gifted- So the difference between ODS and the gifted cluster program is that at ODS, those students receive eight hours a day of instruction with a certified gifted teacher. All the teachers at ODS are certified as gifted. Whereas our cluster teachers may or may not be certified as gifted, but our GRTs are the coaches to those cluster teachers, providing them with the resources and the tools to ensure that they're differentiated in instruction appropriately to meet the needs of those gifted learners. There is not a lottery system. We don't use a lottery system for ODS. We use a system, like I said, it's a holistic process, and the scorers give a rating. Generally, we have three scorers look at any one application. And so based on that, and the number of seats that we're told are available at ODS, that's how the selection happens, but not through a lottery process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Campbell, would you kindly report back to your fellow advisory committee members and express our gratitude for their time and dedication? All right, thank you ladies very much. So that brings us back to policy review, and these are information item policies being presented for the first time. Welcome back, Mrs. Lynetti.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Spencer, I'm Kami Lynetti. And on behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I'm going to present to you tonight the policy review recommendations coming out of the June 10th PRC meeting. The first one is a bylaw. This is bylaw 119. This has to do with duties of the Chair and the Vice Chair. It occurred to me when we had amended the bylaws prior, when we changed the agenda planning process, where we used to do rotating members, then we assigned the Vice Chair to do it, that I had failed to update bylaw 119 to put that in the duties of the Chair and the Vice Chair. So the recommendation for PRC would be under bylaw 119, Section A, Chair, subsection five, that one of the duties will be, we need to meet with the Vice Chair and the Superintendent or Designee to plan the school board meeting agenda, and all requests for agendas made through the Chair and the Vice Chair. Likewise, subsection B has to do with the Vice Chair. We would be recommending, adding a sentence, "The Vice Chair works with the Chair and the Superintendent to plan the school board meeting agendas." Those are the recommendations to this to match the prior agenda planning bylaws that you've updated earlier this year. Are there any questions on bylaw 119? Moving on to bylaw 147. Bylaw 147 has to do with public comments at school board meetings. We just did, the recommendations initially coming out of PRC had to do with updating standing rule B, which you approved earlier tonight. We had differentiated the designation of the two different speaking times, where the first one was, the first one would be on formal agenda items. And there, we also would then recommend that the second speaking opportunity for members of the public would be called hearings of citizens and delegations on informal meeting and non-agenda items. And again, changing to hearings of citizens and delegations on formal agenda items. You had corrected that in bylaw B, standing rules B to the appendix on the bylaws. We have gone ahead and also put it here in bylaw 147. We also noted at the end of section A in 147 that would be, "School board workshop items are considered informal meeting items" because the PRC recommended that that would make it clear to the public what was in there. That recommendation also falls into section D with the bans of procedures. We also designated the new titles in there. Those are the only recommendations at this time coming out of bylaw 147. Does committee members want to make any further comments? Or are there any questions that I can answer on bylaw 147? Yes, ma'am?
So is there a reason in the past that we have had a separation in time for speakers to where they have to go from agenda items to non, and then we have the non-agenda items so far, you know, further into the meetings? Whereas, I'm just asking if we shouldn't just have all of the speaker completed at one time and then be able to move on with our meeting? I'm just curious if there's a history of why we're doing that.
Mrs. Franklin, I may be able to give you the history because unfortunately I'm becoming one of the oldest members attending school board meetings on there. I can tell you that when we initially, when I initially started here, full-time over here, about 20 years ago, you used to do non-agenda items between 6:00 and 6:15 in there. And there were times when that number ran over, and you actually had a bylaw, which we actually recently changed, that if you didn't finish speakers at that time period, you would pick that, you could continue on to 7:15, but then you would need to pick up your regular agenda. That became a little, it took longer for us to do the agenda items. At some point, there were some issues coming up with getting everybody in and comments were being made. So the decision was to move the non-agenda item speakers to the end of the meeting, when you had more time, you wouldn't have to cut people off. However, the decision was to keep the agenda item speakers on because the board members wanted to hear from those individuals about things that were going to be on the agenda. So that was the idea, that you would then be able to hear the agenda item speakers before you voted on items that evening, or you considered items that evening, but non-agenda items, because it didn't always address something that was currently on the agenda. That could wait to the end where you had more time, and then you could listen to them, and it wouldn't hold up getting to the business ends of that. That change, I can't remember exactly when that change happened, a little over 10 years ago, where you moved it to that. So then you went back to just starting a meeting now. The agenda items come in about the third or fourth item on the agenda. So the agenda item speaker, formal agenda item speakers come on, and then you pick up at the end with the non-agenda item speakers. And that's just how you've done the meeting. My understanding at the time was to be more efficient and keep the meeting moving so you weren't holding up the meeting, getting to the items you needed to be. That is not by law set out there. This, there was actually no rule on a law that dealt with speakers at meetings until the General Assembly this year changed it, in which case you now have to accept speakers at a quarter of your meetings during the year. You are not required to accept speakers at every single meeting on there, but that is a new rule. Prior to this year, there's been actually no law in Virginia that required that you have speakers. So this is something you've always accommodated into your meetings on there. Obviously, since you have speakers at your meetings, you don't, you're meeting the one-quarter rules that are now in effect.
I just think that it's somewhat unclear as to why we have, I guess, the ruling about why you have to stay on topic for agenda versus non-agenda, because I think that the public is, might be a little bit unsure or it's not clear as to why we're doing the separation between the agenda and the non-agenda items. So I just, I don't know.
And that is simply a rule that you, the school board has adopted. There is no law that addresses how you do that. That is something that you can address among yourselves.
Ms. Owens?
Thank you. I just wanted to, I guess, more comment than question, but I appreciate that question. Obviously, you are newer than me, but I'm right there behind you. I do think that it's, after being through a number of meetings with lots and lots of speakers, I do appreciate that we are separating the agenda topics and the non-agenda topics, more so for our staff and faculty that are waiting to present until after speakers are done. And when we have topics that generate 40 or 50 speakers, for us to have all of our staff members who've been here since 9:00, 8:00 in the morning, or whatever time they come in, having to wait to provide their presentation to the board until after all of the speakers have gone, isn't, to me, the best use of our staff's time and resources. But I do understand where it presents difficulties for the public who have come to speak and want to make sure that they're heard. I have asked before, and anytime I get an opportunity, I'm going to just put it back out there. I do feel like our non-agenda speakers should be broadcast the same way our agenda speakers are broadcast. And I think that that would help allow for people to feel that they are being fully heard in the same manner, whether they have to wait till the end because there are other things that we need to get through, if their comments are not time-sensitive to what we're voting on. But kind of just on that vein, I think that's something that maybe at the retreat or whenever, I hope that we can look at to continue moving towards that transparency and being able to review those comments later and having people feel that they are heard in the same level, whether they're speaking on agenda or non-agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, please proceed.
No, I'm sorry, Mrs. Hughes, looks like.
Oh, Mrs. Hughes.
I was going to say, I've always been in favor of having the agenda and non-agenda speakers both speak together. I really hadn't given a lot of thought to the staff that stays in wait, and that's a really good point. However, I too believe that our non-agenda speakers should be broadcast and should be part of the record, just like the rest of our meeting.
Okay, so please proceed, Mrs. Lynetti, with the remaining, what is it, three more?
Moving on, we have four policies left for recommendations from the Policy Review Committee. The first is policy 352. This, and again, policy, policy section three deals with business and non-instructional operations. Again, as you remember, the PRC is on a five-year rotating basis, looking at all your policies as required by the standards of accreditation. So we took a look at this policy. If you note at the bottom, it has not been looked at since 1993, so it's more than due. It turns out we've already taken all the issues that are already listed here. We've incorporated them into other policies and regulations that appear that you've already approved in the last two years. So looking at this, we are recommending that you repeal policy 352 as the issues here are already dealt with and have been brought before the school board in the last two years. Then if there are further questions on 352, we'll move on to 356. 356, again, is also in the business and instructional area. This has to do with the safety program, is also related to the next policy, 364. The Office of Safe Schools took a look at these regulations for us. Again, as you'll notice, not updated since 1993. This one, the first one in 356 is safety programs. They're just recommending some minor script changes within the policy itself. In the editor's note, they are recommending that we take out the reference to safe school plan. Instead, from mutation, reference the Office of Safe School website for information concerning VBS policies and procedures. There are a number of policies, procedures, and guidances that deal with the safe school programs, it's not in one location, and that language better reflects where you would find that information. Are there any questions on policy 356? If there are questions on policy 356, I will move on to policy 364. Again, also in business non-instructional, this is security of buildings and grounds. Minor changes in here. Under subsection A, which deals with generally having to do with buildings and ground, subsection four is persons apprehended for acts of vandalism. It did say that they would be prosecuted. That is not always how we handle these issues. We may prosecute them, and that is what the Office of Safe Schools is recommending, that it now read, persons apprehended for acts of vandalism may be subject to prosecution. Under subsection B, just some minor changes there, recommend school employees, and then we pull out the last sentence of section B, having to do with all contact titles, minutes, official papers, the school board shall be stored in a fireproof vault at the school board offices. Most of our records are now online and stored, which is acceptable with the Library of Virginia. So we're recommending that that line be pulled out. The reference is, again, our minor script changes after that. Are there any questions having to do with policy 364? If you have no questions, I will move on to the final policy. Final policy is policy 46. This is actually under the personnel area. I'm trying to think, this was 2018. The General Assembly passed a law that talked about what they called abusive environments and conduct, and we were required to adopt policies having to do with this. This applies to employees working for school divisions. So this policy was adopted at that time period. As you know, we've worked through a couple issues having to do with how to handle complaints that involve the superintendent of the school board. When you amended policy by law 128, which, yes, I know you've amended many times in the last year, but one of those last amendments that you did had authorized the Governors Committee to handle certain types of complaints. That was not fully reflected in this policy. We wanted to make sure that individuals looking at this understood that this would be handled through a different procedure than we do with most employees. Many employees, when they're complaining about other school board, other school board employees, will go to the Human Resources Department. That is not consistent with how we handle complaints having to do with the superintendent of the school board. So we're now recommending that the final paragraph of 46 read, "If the acts that are alleged to cause an abusive work environment are alleged to be caused by a school board member or the superintendent, such complaints and supporting evidence shall be referred to the school board to investigate and resolve. The superintendent Designee or the school board are authorized to take reasonable remedial measures to provide a work environment that is free of abusive conduct pending the final resolution of the complaint." That is reflective, and again, not all complaints, but most of these complaints would then fall under the Governors Committee's jurisdiction to determine how they would handle such complaints and bring them back to the school board. This policy is now being recommended to be updated to reflect that this would not be something Human Resources handles, that it would come to you as a school board to handle. Are there any questions on the recommendations for policy 4-6? There are no recommendations.
Mrs. Lynetti? Why do I have here that number two ends with the word review?
I'm sorry, I'm going to pull that out.
Will be referred to the Governance Committee to review, period.
Yes, ma'am. If you look at, the Governance Committee was looking for the procedures of this, not all of these. They will determine whether it amounts to complaint.
But when you read it, you used other terminology, other verbiage, which is, right?
So the first one, this, this warning, "Evidently referred to the school board to investigate and resolve." I'm sorry, did I say that wrong?
I thought it was to review.
To review.
To review, okay.
Right, and I thought we changed that to the Governance Committee, but I could be wrong. It doesn't state that, though. It says, "Refer to the school board to investigate and resolve." It should say, "To the school board Governance Committee to investigate and review."
And review.
Just review, to review was what I heard.
Yeah, just to review. Yeah, not investigate to review.
But didn't we say the School Board Governance Committee in committee? I don't know if this didn't get changed, or...
We did say the School Governance Committee.
So that it would be reflective of both of the...
That can, that can be...
And then the School Governance Committee brings it back to the school board.
Correct.
Right.
Finally, it comes to the school board. I can adjust those words for the next, bring it back to the school board at the next school board meeting.
We eliminated investigate, but we just said review.
Just review. Investigates out, it's just the word review.
Then, of course, the Governance Committee reports back to this board.
To the full board, yes, ma'am.
Right.
I can make those changes, and they will be in the next, next time we'll be in the policy review recommendations to the school board.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all the recommendations of PRC.
Okay. Committee organization or board reports, colleagues? I know with the end of the year, but there might still be a few. Okay, Mrs. Rigs?
Okay, so now things are getting started up again. Sister Cities is going to be starting up with their breakfast that they have, and it will be on September 16th at the Town City Club. I will be getting back with you with more details, but you'll be getting invitations to that, so I'm hoping that many of you will want to come to that breakfast.
What's the date on that again?
September 16th.
Thank you.
And remember, this is to raise funds to help with the scholarships for the students that are run for the Sister City student ambassador. So, and we will be having that student ambassador activity March the 4th at Moca. So that's just a little bit right there, but... So we're going to be, because our student ambassador has been our student ambassador for the last two years, and usually we pick a new one every year. But because of COVID, we had, we kept her for two years. And thankfully, she was a junior, so, from Cox. So Alani will be going to college in New Jersey, and it's time to just to move on anyway and to come back with our program. So I'll give you more information. But, you know, I'm hoping that many of you will be able to come to that breakfast. Okay?
Anybody else? So I can just share that retreat details are being finalized, so look out for another email shortly on that. All right, so that concludes our formal meeting.